Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to our council meeting tonight. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to lead us in a prayer, and then right from my prayer, we'll go right into the pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Amen. Mr. Rose, call roll please.
Councilman Hambride.
Here.
President Logan.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Hogg.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. The Honorable Mayor Donna Ehren has a proclamation for us. This is a proclamation, I think, Mayor, for the Autoimmune Disease Awareness Month.
Whereas, autoimmunity is defined as a misdirection of the immune, excuse me, of the immune system often triggered by genetic environmental factors, causing more than one hundred chronic debilitating and fatal diseases. Autoimmunity may affect any system or organ of the body, leaving patients vulnerable to developing more than one autoimmune disease. Whereas, autoimmune diseases are among the top three causes of death of girls and women in the United States up to the age of sixty-five. Research shows that up to fifty million Americans have been diagnosed with one or more autoimmune diseases, and future generations of these patients are predisp- I can't talk tonight. Predisp- disposed to the autoimmune response. And whereas there is currently no cure for autoimmunity and autoimmune disease, and treatment is usually symptom-based, ranging from cortisone and immunity-suppressant drugs to viral therapy and chemotherapy drugs. And whereas insufficient data on autoimmune diagnosis in the United States leads to difficulty tracking treatment, diseases development, and economic burden of autoimmunity. And whereas volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals are working to improve the quality of life of persons living with autoimmune diseases and their families. And whereas research, education, and community support services are needed to find more effective treatments and to eradicate autoimmunity and autoimmune disease. Now therefore, I, Donna Ehren, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Northport, Alabama, do proclaim March two thousand seventeen to be Autoimmune Disease Awareness Month. In the City of Northport, and encourage all students to support, citizens to support efforts towards becoming educated about the detection, effective treatment, and eradication of autoimmune diseases. And I have a daughter-in-law who has a rare autoimmune disease. So, I certainly do support you.
Well, we look forward to supporting you, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Item five is approval of the agenda, ladies and gentlemen. In our pre-meeting, we were presented with our agenda from the Senate Administrator's Office. At this time, is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Motion to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Hogg, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hambride. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item six is visitors to address our council, Mr. Walter. Mr. Walter Turner of our VFW Post six zero two-two. Mr. Walter, always good to see you.
I'll do it this way. Kind of a one-man show tonight, so pardon me, but each year, the veteran of the foreign wars, the United States, honors those who risked their lives every day in protecting our communities so we can feel safe in our homes, schools, and everyday life. Today, we're here to honor our community's best of the best. We honor the Law Enforcement Officer of the Year, Firefighter of the Year, and EMT of the Year. Tonight, we're honoring the EMT of the Year. They were nominated by their respective organizations as top performers in their respective fields. The VFW Emergency Gold Medal Service Award for Outstanding Emergency Medical Technician of the Year is awarded to an individual for outstanding service in the field of emergency service. To recognize an individual who provides emergency medical treatment, provides rescue service, or civil disaster assistance as a member of a public or volunteer company organized for those purposes. The VFW Post six oh two-two and District Six winner, Gold Medal Award for Emergency Medical Technician of the Year for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, is awarded to firefighter paramedic Thomas Waters, Northport Fire Department. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. And congratulations, Thomas. Item seven A-one under unfinished business, ladies and gentlemen, is a second reading of an ordinance annexing parcels of land in the southeast portion of Hidden Meadows South, Phase Four, along Garden Creek Lane and Rose Boulevard, Mr. Stevens.
Yes, sir, this is a portion of the newest and final section of Hidden Meadows South. It was a portion that was later incorporated after the original project was annexed. We discovered that it was unincorporated right after the subdivision was recorded. Still under one ownership and has not been developed, so we're eager to get it annexed now.
Thank you. Is there a motion to grant that annexation of parcel?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hambride. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two is a second reading of an ordinance rezoning the property from AG to RS dash SD, described as parcels of land in the southeast portion of Hidden Meadows South, Phase Four, along Garden Creek Lane and Rose Boulevard, Mr. Stevens.
Yes, sir, this is the annexation, or the rezoning, subsequent to the annexation you just voted on. When properties annex, they come in originally as AG agricultural, and the request is to rezone this to single-family residential.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the rezoning?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan, second by Councilman Hogg. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item three is a second reading of a permanent resolution accepting the municipal improvements, with the exception of sidewalks in Hidden Meadows, Phase Four, Mr. Webb.
Yes, President Logan, Council Mayor. The developer installs streets, water, sewer, storm drain infrastructure, except sidewalks, as part of this development. The structure's been constructed, inspected, and bonded for maintenance, and it's ready for acceptance by the city.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the attached resolution accepting the maintenance for municipal public improvements, which is developer-driven, excluding the sidewalks for Hidden Meadows, Phase Four subdivision?
I'll make the motion as well.
Thank you, that's a motion by Councilman Sullivan, second by Councilman Hogg. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item four is a second reading of an ordinance rezoning three parcels of land located at Shady Hill Road and Millwood Drive from AG to RS ten, Mr. Stevens.
Yes, sir, this is the property that the council annexed at their last meeting, and this is the subsequent rezoning from the original AG agricultural to single-family residential.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt or grant the request for rezoning of those three parcels from AG to RS ten?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item five is a second reading of a permanent resolution accepting maintenance and municipal improvements for Union Station, Mr. Webb.
Yes, President Logan, this is a commercial development which required streets, water, sewer, and storm drain infrastructure. The infrastructure's been constructed, inspected, and bonded for maintenance, and it's ready for acceptance by the city.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the attached resolution accepting maintenance for municipal public improvements for Union Station?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Eight A-one, under new business, is a first reading of an ordinance rezoning eight point seven acres located on Baptist Campground Road from RS dash three-five to C-three, which is a commercial designation, Mr. Stevens.
Yes, sir, this is a property that was heard before the planning commission last Tuesday night and received favorable recommendation. It's approximately nine acres, it's on the west side of Baptist Campground, on the Charlie Shirley side. The request is to rezone from single-family residential to commercial.
Thank you. Again, no, no action needed, this is just for a member of council to offer for a first reading.
I'll offer that for a first reading.
Thank you. Offered up by Councilman Sullivan. Item two is a first reading of an ordinance repealing the false alarm ordinance, Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. President, in the past, this was needed to prevent the numerous false alarms from various businesses and residences, the technology's now changed, and it's the recommendation of the staff that the entire section be removed. It had a provision that was not being enforced, requiring per annual permits for businesses and residents that had alarms, and it's just, it's never collected, so we think the easiest thing to do is simply remove that section.
Correct. Alright, so if you don't remove it, I guess you don't want to pass that to any citizen, right?
That's correct.
I'll offer that for a first reading. Item three is a first reading of an ordinance amending the Northport City Code relating to the Office of City Administrator-Clerk, Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. President, what this does is restore Section two dash fourteen, which was repealed when the Mayor at the time assumed the, also assumed the duties of City Administrator, since he could not serve as City Clerk. It also reinstates Section two dash one-one-seven, which reaffirms that the Administrator position is non-civil service. And finally, it changes slightly Section two dash one-one-nine, conservative removal from office to make it more consistent with the code.
Like we said in the pre-meeting, Ron, this basically re-adds the repealed sections, mirrors state code, and does some language cleanup to keep everything consistent.
Yes, sir.
Alright. Someone in the member of council like to offer that for a first reading?
Most approve.
That's a first reading by Councilman Hambride. Eight B-one is a resolution authorizing our Senate Administrator's Office to execute any professional engineering requisitions pertaining to the wastewater treatment plant aeration basin number one regarding wall repairs, Mr. McKinney.
Yes, in that, in two thousand thirteen, we contracted with Krebs Engineering to be our engineer for our wastewater and wastewater plant. And since that time, we've discovered a small problem with one of the joints on the aeration basin. Those basins were built in nineteen ninety-four, and we need to get a repair on the joint. There's no real problem with it, other than we just, it, we don't want it to be leaking. So, we've hired, we recommend you approve this, this will bring in Krebs to approve the potential repairs, solicit the contractor, and make any recommendations on the repairs.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that resolution authorizing our Senate Administrator's Office to execute any professional engineering requisitions related to the wastewater treatment plant aeration basin number one regarding wall repairs?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hogg. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item two is a resolution declaring certain items surplus and authorizing the proper disposal, Chief Marshall.
Yes, sir, we have six items that have reached their useful lifespan with our department, and we're requesting the council allow us to surplus, most notably some SCBA cylinders that are out of date and can't be re-hydrostatic tested, sorry.
Alright, thank you, Chief. Is there a motion to approve the resolution declaring certain item and equipment as surplus and authorizing a proper disposal?
Make that motion.
That's a motion by Councilman Hogg, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item three is a resolution awarding the bid for water treatment plant process residuals, removal, and disposal, Mr. McKinney.
Yes, as you know, at the water treatment plant, we use lime and alum in the, in the treatment of the water. This causes an alum sludge that we store in the lagoon at the foot of the hill. Every few years, this lagoon has to be cleaned out. This is an inert material that poses no health danger and can be taken to an inert landfill. Because we do this every couple of years, we have tried, we're doing a three-year contract bid out, and we took bids, we received the lowest bid from Merrill Brothers for a hundred and eighty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty dollars for one year's cleaning.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that resolution awarding the bid for water treatment plant process residual removal and disposal to the low bidder, which is Merrill Brothers, in the amount of one hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty dollars, and authorizing our Senate Administrator's Office to execute the required documents and requisitions?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hambride. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Item four is a resolution declaring certain items as surplus and authorizing their disposal, Mr. Rose.
Yes, Mr. President, every year, we do a safety incentive program with our employees, for those employees who have and participate in safety work practices and not having injuries on the job, and what we do is offer prizes at the end of the year for those employees that do buy safe working conditions, and attach as a copy of the receipt of items that we will be surplusing at, at, uh, to distribute to employees. And also, we have a couple of chairs that came from the mezzanine and a floor scrubber we're cleaning out that we need to do surplus as well.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that resolution declaring certain items as, and equipment as surplus and authorized for proper disposal?
Most approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Hambride, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. I'm sorry if I missed that one, I thought it was Davis speaking. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Here's, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Item five is a resolution awarding bid file one seven dash zero-three for lawn maintenance, Mr. Stevens.
Yes, sir, this resolution is to award the contract for our on-call grass-cutting service for those lots that are, remain in violation of our grass and weed ordinance.
Alright, just as a point of reference to, Mr. Stevens, the process, and I think this was answered in our pre-meeting, someone has a weeded lot, you got grass as tall as me, Mr. Terry, you appreciate that. We give them seven days, once they get the letter, we give them seven days, is that right?
Fourteen days, actually.
Fourteen days, see that? We give them two weeks. After that, then we'll come in, and we'll get our awarded contractor to come in and do that.
The contractor has to perform the work within seven days of notification.
And then we put a lien on the property.
Yes, sir, on their property taxes.
Okay. Alright, is there a motion to approve that resolution awarding the bid file for lawn maintenance?
Move to approve.
Thank you, that's a motion by Councilman Sullivan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item six is a resolution approving a step pay raise for city employees, Mr. Rose.
Yes, as, Mr. President, as you know, in the last budget that y'all approved on the ninth, I believe, of March, it included a step raise for employees, and this, uh, resolution would clarify what the starting date that that would be implemented on, what pay period.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving a step raise for all city employees?
I'll make that motion.
That's a motion by Councilman Hogg, is there a second?
Second.
I'll go with Councilman Hambride on that one, I think he beat you. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item seven is a resolution opposing Senate Bill thirty-one and House Bill fifty-eight, this is a Montgomery issue, Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. President, the Lincoln Municipalities has requested that each municipality pass an opposition, excuse me, pass a resolution opposing Senate Bill thirty-one, which was passed by the Senate, it's now been moved to the House for committee, been assigned to a committee. What this does is remove from business sales, business licenses, the amount for prescription drugs. And while that sounds like something to help everyone in this room, you don't pay tax on prescription drugs. Walmart, CVS, those kind of people have to buy a business license. So, what's going to happen is the corporations that sell prescription drugs are going to save a lot of money throughout the state of Alabama in their business licenses. For example, if Walmart sells fifty million dollars worth of merchandise, and fifteen million of that is prescription drugs, instead of them buying a business license based on fifty million dollars, they'll buy a business license based on thirty-five million dollars. And I would not hold my breath until that savings got passed down to me or you. So, it's going to cost cities throughout the state a lot of money. It will cost the City of Northport several hundred thousand dollars. As I mentioned in the pre-meeting, we have a company that does audits for business licenses throughout the country, and they, I don't know if we ever gotten one this large. They, last month, sent us a check for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars from a national company that does business in Northport. And my guess is what they do is they sell prescriptions wholesale to DCH Northport, and the lost business license income for the City of Northport from just this one company that you've never heard of over the last four years is almost a quarter of a million dollars, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, you can imagine, if it's that much from that company, add two Walmarts, a CVS, Walgreens, other pharmacies, how much impact that's going to have on this city. So, we need to be very proactive and let our legislature always know how important that is to us and to every other municipality. So, what this is, is a resolution going in support of opposing this bill, and we will draft a letter for Mayor Ehren to sign forwarding to all members of our legislative delegation, but also urge you to contact them individually.
Thank you, Ron, again. Prescription drugs, we don't pay sales tax, but this will really, really hurt the consumer if, if Senate Bill thirty-one and House Bill fifty-eight, which has already gone through some aspects of committee, if it's passed.
Yes, sir.
Alright. I think Councilman Sullivan's going to give us a Montgomery update at some point when they reconvene, and I think, is that right, Councilman?
Yeah, I've got several things lined up with our local delegation, this is one of the items I wasn't aware of until the other day. I'll certainly be bringing that up with our local delegation, see where they're at on this. They're on a two-week spring break right now, so they won't go back till the first of April. So, that's good, it gives us two weeks to kind of reach out to everybody and find out where this is in committee on the House side. I think we're trying to work on that now, so we know who the correct representatives are to contact. So, as soon as I can get something together, I'll certainly get it to all you guys, and we can, we can reach out to everybody.
On our website, so our citizens, if they chose to do the same thing, they would know.
Absolutely.
Yep, yep.
And on the website.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution opposing Senate Bill thirty-one and House Bill fifty-eight?
I'll make a motion to, um, for the adoption of a resolution opposing Senate Bill thirty-one and House Bill fifty-eight.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item eight is a resolution authorizing the filing of a lawsuit relating to the January sixth, two thousand seventeen automobile accident, Mr. Davis.
Yes, Mr. President, this is the accident that occurred on Highway eighty-two when our employees were attempting to spread sand on the bridges. You recall, the roads were very icy. There was a sand truck, and behind it was a pickup truck with the lights flashing, and an individual traveling east on Highway eighty-two was in the left lane rather than switching lanes. He rear-ended the pickup that had, was stopped going, at time of impact, going approximately sixty miles an hour, and spun around, and he was managed to hit not only the pickup, but also the dump truck that was in front of the pickup. He was charged with driving under the influence, he supposedly has out, insurance with Alpha, Alpha's not certain at this point. I'm proceeding to file suit with the council's permission on behalf of the damage to the city, as well as any of the employees that wish to be a part.
Thank you, Ron. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the filing of a lawsuit to recover damages resulting from that automobile accident that occurred on January sixth, two thousand seventeen, on US Highway eighty-two, involving two city vehicles and four city employees?
Motion approved.
That's a motion by Councilman Hambride, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item C is our consent agenda, we have seventeen items arranged for minutes of the previous meeting on March sixth, the regular meeting, and March tonight, which was a special called meeting. Bill listings, travel, and training for our various departments, and P.O. requisitions for water and wastewater, as well as a training opportunity in our water wastewater. Is there a motion to approve that consent agenda as printed?
I'll make that motion.
That's a motion by Councilman Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments?
I have one, uh, comment, just want to clarify something, if you look on the agenda, because this is such a large item, I want to make sure, we're kind of going into detail with you guys about it, so you'll know. Item number sixteen, it's a P.O. for two garbage trucks for Houston Freightliner. This is the first step in a very long process, hopefully not too long, for the City of Northport switching over to the one-day-a-week garbage pickup, where your, you know, your first can will be given to every citizen. You now are on two-day-a-week pickup, that would all change to one. The reason we're going to go ahead, we want to go ahead, move forward with this item is the time it takes to get it ready and get it delivered to the city. I think Ms. Star said it'd be sometime around August. That gives us plenty of time to do, try to answer any and all questions that the citizens may have. I know we, as council members, have questions as well. Brooke has already reached out to all of us to try to put together a plan to address anything that may come up, and we certainly want to give the public all the information we can as we move forward with this. This is a very large project, I think it's very, very beneficial to the city on several different fronts. I'm certainly excited about it, it's, it's going to take a while to do, but we're going to go ahead and move forward with this, hopefully. And then, in the meantime, while that's being done, we're going to try to field any questions or concerns through several different resources between now and then, so you guys are up to date as possible on this. So, be looking for that as, say, next several months. Any questions, please go on our city website, all of our email addresses are on there. Please use them, let us know any concerns, we'll pass it all on to Brooke. Which, we want this to roll out as smooth as possible, I think she's already going to move forward with meeting with other cities, see how they did it, just trying to make this work the first time as efficiently as possible, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. That was a motion by Councilman Davis, second by Councilman Sullivan. Any further comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Hambride.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Hogg.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Reports of special committees to council, we have one in our admin- Thank you. Reports of special committees to council. We have one in our admin committee, the one to give us an update and a possible resolution for approval request.
Yes, Mr. President. This is on the administrative committee. We met on March the seventh and we came up with some changes on our rental here at the Civic Center City Hall. And I see Ms. Whitfield out there. You're covered for the free rental this year because you were already on the book and, and you, I'd be looking at you, so. But it will start this year. There've been some changes on the fee we charge and also some other things such as a cleanup and cancellations. And Ms. Ram reminded me of something. I couldn't remember what it was, the things that were changed afterwards that, not on this.
Yes, sir. The, um, other changes would, the, the big changes would be a twenty percent discount for nonprofits. Also, we'd like to offer a twenty percent discount for consecutive rentals. Say if a, if someone has something scheduled that's in two or more consecutive days, then they would also get a twenty percent discount.
Ms. Ram, I had, I mean, Ms. Whitfield, I have your copy.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
I'll make that motion.
That's a motion by Councilman Hambright. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item eleven is city administrator's business, Mr. Rose.
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. President. Just something for the council to think about. We don't have to make a decision tonight, but every year, the League of Municipalities has a convention and, uh, we will need to select a voting delegate, a alternate, and a second alternate to be in attendance on Monday, May the twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, at three forty-five for the annual business session portion of the league conference. We have until May fifth to notify the league, but that is something for your consideration over the next couple of council meetings to come up with a voting delegate, a first alternate, and a second alternate voting delegate.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. And again, that's council. I guess we've got till May the fifth to decide who we select as our voting and alternate and alternate to. Item twelve is departmental business. I think, Ron, you had one request out of our pre-meeting.
Yes, the department heads have requested that I have an executive session tonight. So everyone loves those, uh, hope to be out in twenty minutes or less and to discuss potential sale of city property.
Alright.
That, again, we'll come back. No action will be taken except adjournment.
Alright, Ron. What I'll do is I will move the executive session to item fifteen and push adjournment to item sixteen. Uh, item, item. Item thirteen is a public comment. We have none on the, uh, agenda sheet for public comments. Item fourteen is mayor and council members' business. District one, Councilman Hambright.
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you. District two under my business, I do want to give an update on MLK Project. BKI and Bruce Higginbotham and his team have, they're underway or they're starting the design process. If you remember, council and mayor, a few months back, we formally approved the project to partner with ALDOT. So what that did, that triggered the design phase. And from there, it's different from a conceptual where you see the pretty picture. Now he's putting pen to paper where you will design the project based on engineering guidelines. So again, that's going to be a process. So today is, let's say, April. It'll, it'll take him a few months just because the sheer magnitude of the project, when you're starting from Bridge Avenue until Snow's Mills and then from there, it's Tuscaloosa course. But, uh, he is actually in the middle of designing it to get it out for a possible bid. Again, it's going to take a little bit of time, but in the meantime, I am going to have a couple smaller meetings with our stakeholders and that we, we usually have a stakeholders meeting before Memorial Day. Reason being is we want to have something to present to our stakeholders in the form of a design, not a conception, not, you know, not a conceptual drawing, but just not a pretty picture, but we want something to where you can put it on the street and you'll know our progress. So that's where I am with the MLK Project. BKI is, is really working hard on it. ALDOT will start picking up their end of it the latter part of this year, but we have to get these designs drawn up so we can put it on the street for bid. So, uh, that's, that's my report on MLK and my, my business. District three, Councilman Sullivan? District four, Councilman Davis?
Yes, Mr. President. We have a projects committee meeting on the tenth of April, uh, at nine AM for anyone that wants to attend. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Hogg?
I have none.
Mayor Aaron?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. President. Mayor, members of council, uh, started, forgot to add, this Thursday at eleven-thirty, we'll have a public safety meeting. This is a meeting with Rob Robertson with Tuscaloosa County EMA. He's got several updates for us. Certainly want to invite anybody to attend that. Should be quite, quite interesting.
Mayor Aaron, did you have anything? I didn't, I didn't.
No, sir, I didn't. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Alright, item fifteen is going to be executive session. Again, this by state code will have to be a unanimous consent or approval for the council. Is there a motion to go into executive session for no more than twenty minutes to discuss a possible city sale of property? I'll make that in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Rose.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hambright?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Here is, Mr. President, and I have.
Actually, give us, give me till, it's six thirty-seven now. Give me three minutes to do some signatures. That way, nobody's waiting on us and that way, if I need to answer questions out in the audience, give us three minutes. We are under.
Camera guy wanted to see you too.
I, I may have some, some citizens out in the audience too, so I might make sure I address anything with them, so.